All right, we're going to start the November 12th meeting at 4:30. Can we please rise to the platform?
Bledging into the light of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under a individual liberty and justice law.
Do you have any public comments? Presentation is CD.
Yeah, I can preface this. So this evening, we've asked Jeremy Murphy, who's the data base administrator, to come in and kind of dovetail this presentation with the opening of the parent portal for PowerSchool. The idea is just to communicate kind of what it looks like, how you access it, and some of the information that you can find out about your kids. And hopefully, we can deliver some of the visioning that we have moving forward for the next year to two years in terms of comprehensive-based education. So with that said, I'll ask Jeremy to come on up and give us the tour.
Welcome.
All right, so I just wanted to show you very quickly what the parents will see in the parent portal to PowerSchool. We'll start with two things, first of all, this is a test server, so this is all fake data, fake students, fake everything. And I also haven't closed down any portions of it. There are a lot more options here than the parents will see initially in the real parent portal. But when you log in and you're all connected to your kids, the first thing you will see here is the grades and attendance screen. From the screen, you can get a lot of information. You can get your attendance across the side there. You see it shows this week and last week's attendance by default. You can see a list of all the classes that your student is currently in. I only have two for the student. And right next to that, you have the grades for each trimester pulled out. And obviously, I've only filled out one. These are the final grades as calculated at the current time. This is all live data. So the minute a teacher puts in an assignment or changes the score, it will be updated on your screen. So if you wanted to look at the student's B- and see how this was calculated, you click on it and it will show you a list of all the assignments the teacher has put into the gradebook. So down here, you have a list of how many, you know, fake assignments that I put in. Up here at the top, it has the information for the class, you know, the name of the class, the teacher, which I've said to myself, when the class meets. There's also a section here for the final grade comment. Typically, at the end of any trimester, a teacher will want to put in a little narrative. This is where, one of the places that the parents can find that. Below it are all of the assignments. So there's a lot going on here, but it's got this key down here that kind of wants to do what's happening. You have the name of the assignment. You have whether it was a summative or formative assignment. If it has been graded, you will see the grade. This is a traditional grade. And there's also a section that you can open up under each assignment that shows you which competencies have been associated with that assignment. So under each of these, you can see we have three things that have been tacked onto it, and you can see the individual scores for each of these competencies as they relate to that particular assignment. So this screen is just a breakdown of all the traditional stuff and what's connected. But if we're talking about competencies, there's a lot more information. Up here, there's another tab called Standards Grades. PowerSchool uses the word standards in much the same way we use competencies. They're essentially the same thing in the system. So this tab will show you the final grades, the current final grades, for each one of the competencies pulled out. So when I open up this student, when I opened up the social studies class, which is what we were just looking at, you can see all of the competencies that currently have a grade associated with them. If a teacher hasn't put in a grade for a particular competency, it will not show. So when you see civics over here, no, that doesn't tell you a whole lot. But if you click on the grade, it gives you a lot more information. First, it gives you the description of the competency. So you can see what this particular subject area is all about. You can also see if the teacher has put in a comment for their grade on this particular competency. So this is where you get a narrative for a specific competency instead of the whole class. Down at the bottom here, it even has a little description of what the 1, 2, 3, and 4 actually mean, what the definition of those terms are. Now initially, these are the most important screens that we're going to see on the parent portal. Obviously, there's a lot more that the system does, but this is where the parents are going to be able to see the grades. They're going to see the assignments. They're going to see the attendance, everything that they really care about. Later on, there's more stuff over here that we can always explore. I think an important one would be report cards. So the parents will be able to see the report cards right here if they log in. There's also going to be some school information. You have some information related to the teachers. So let's say you're looking at the social studies class, and you want a little bit more information about what's going on there. Right underneath is the name of the teacher. And if you click on that, it will open up your email client so you can email that teacher. Or you can right-click on it and copy email address. So this is how you can communicate with the teacher directly. And really, that's most of it. It's a pretty simple system. Oh, up on the top left here, if you have more than one student, you can switch between your students here. Actually, I have two set up. And this one's probably more pertinent to you guys, but it's all the same stuff. So that's the basics.
Just a quick kind of caveat. The notion that Jeremy's expressing with being able to kind of unpack a grade into their competencies, that has not been required of Seabrook Middle School as of yet. However, in the coming weeks and months, we are having those conversations actively. We've got other schools that are looking at adding assignments with those competencies, and they can actually unpack their assignments. We'd like to deliver on that across the SAU in the midterm, I'll call it. Not short-term, not long-term, but long-term. The second thing, and it's important to note specifically in Stephanie's case, K through 5, or sorry, in Seabrook, K through 4. Right now, the information that parents want on the report card, per se, is very granular. You're going to, if you have a kindergarten or a first grader, you're going to want to know specific information about early literacy skills, about math skills and those kind of things. So because that's the way, that's what parents want to see, we need to do a little bit more work on the K through 4 reporting side. First of all, determining exactly what gets shown to moms and dads. Second of all, determining on the report card, how granular can we make it? Can we make it, you know, a longer list of specific skills that moms and dads want to see, 1, 2, 3, and 4s on? So we're not there yet. But on K 4, that's the story. And on Seabrook Middle School, 5 through 8, the competencies is where we want to go in the near future.
Are you actually piloting either another district as far as what you're planning on turning out in this room?
Yes, so we have, I'll use Northampton Middle. Right now, they are attaching assignments to competencies. And a mom or dad in a scenario like that is going to see something much like what you guys see here, where you're actually able to kind of unfold a given assignment and see exactly what was assessed. That also offers a couple of different things. First, on the teacher's side, you can get a sense of like a body of work, like a progression on these competencies. So I can track a given competency across the entire trimester and see how a student is increasing. The second thing, and this is really important to kind of our pursuit, is that these can be, these competencies, we can track them aggregately. Meaning, I can, for the first time ever, this is apples to apples. Northampton's looking at the same thing as Hampton Falls is looking at, and they're looking at the same thing your teachers are looking at. So we can pull a given competency and say, hey, look, across the SAU, we're having trouble with whatever, polynomials. Let's work on some PD around that. Or let's talk about how we're approaching those lessons or what kind of assessments we're giving them. So we're on the cusp of a pretty fantastic tool in terms of diagnostics, aggregate and local diagnostics.
Any other questions?
So it seems how you get PowerSchool, right? So a couple of ones that, because I've been looking at this quite often. Are we eventually going to turn on our lunch program into the PowerSchool so as a parent, I know what balance my kid's, so I don't get an email from Abigail saying, hey, your kid's still not putting in funds? Because we have it right here as it's balanced in here. So I don't understand, right now, it's turned off by our district, so that's by you guys, because it's just not attached. I'm just asking if that's something in the future we're going to talk about and discuss and move forward with?
Sure, we'll certainly have that conversation. I don't want to promise something that's technically not possible. I think from a technical standpoint, we have to jump over that hurdle. Right now, obviously, our energy is involved with grading and assessment and all that kind of stuff. However, the capacity's there, and we can start kind of spitballing a lot of this stuff.
Do you have access to that now?
No. You get an email from Abigail unless you're on top of it. I'm sure I'll be able to talk about that later. The other part was is that if I want to talk to all my kids' students or my kids' teachers, I can't just, I would really pick all their names. I gotta do individual emails to each one of them. Is it possible in PowerSchool, so I have a conference button? Or, because right now, the only way I can do it is either copy all their addresses to an email in my, and then do it. Or like I did last time was, I wrote my email, I copied it, and I pasted it to every one of the teachers. So I get individual responses back. We used to, and when we had JUPR grades, I could just select all their names and hit the send button, and they all got the same email. So now, I have to do it as a parent, I'd have to do that individually in the new PowerSchool program. If there's a way around it, please tell me, explain it to everybody else. So if they have, like, your kid's going to go on vacation, I want to tell all the teachers that he's going to be gone. Or, hey, there's something going on with my child, I need to tell you guys upfront. That's the thing I'd like to be able to have as a group to all his teachers, his or her teachers, as we go forward with it.
Yeah, I understand that.
I just don't know how to do it here yet.
I think what I, I mean, as a dad, what I would do is, I would do exactly what you did. I would copy and paste the email addresses into one email, and then I'd have that, I'd save that as a group, and just be able to do that. I can't speak to the capacity of doing a forum or a thing like that.
It's not a built-in feature.
Okay, I didn't know if it was, because I was just trying to understand. I know how I did it last time, I got it to go. And yeah, we are still a ways away from this style here, where it's all broken out. I mean, the grades, what I see right now as a parent is I see my kids' grades, I see the absences, tiredness and all that stuff. And if the teacher leaves me a comment, there's a comment section over there. That's about all we have right now in PowerSchool. Because it's a building in progress, and it's the first year we're going to go through the hurdles.
Yep, and that's what we've chosen to provide, because that's where we are. I think I gotta tip my hat to Lauren, the work that she's been doing with the teachers in terms of navigating that. Right now, we're using the competency side of the gradebook, if you will, as what we'll call the sandbox. Teachers are learning how to associate a given assignment with a competency and seeing how that actually interacts. We don't want to open moms and dads up to that sandbox yet.
We do have the ability to control this on a pretty granular level, so there are definitely cases. We almost never want to open it all up. So we can implement pieces as it becomes appropriate.
I think it's nice, because now we're all in the same program. It's just a matter of getting all of our teachers trained in all the pros and cons of how it actually operates and get them up there and get the information to our parents for their education.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions?
I think the lunch thing is important. A lot of people are having issues with, you know, not knowing how much their kids have in their account or why they're going over. I thought there was a portion where the people could see exactly what was purchased, so they'd know where the money is.
So we do have a pay portal, so parents can set up an account, and they can see their balance, add money to that, or they can send in money if they'd like doing a check or something, and that goes in.
Yeah, I thought we had that with the system.
So it's just not, we don't have it linked with PowerSchool to be able to do that yet?
But the parents do have access to something to see.
Yeah, it's just a different system. Abby, is there anything else?
Yeah, so on our lunchtime system, where that's this whole system we use for breakfast and lunch, any parent who has an online account for their kids, and they can link multiple kids to their account, if they sign on, they can see all the transaction history, all the deposits, really everything that I have access to see. They have it. The only thing is, they just need to establish an online account. That's all they have to do. They don't even need to make deposits online. I have some parents just establish an account to track what their kids are doing. So that's how they are able to track it.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeremy.
Public comments. Approval of minutes, October 8th, public.
I'll make motion to approve the public minutes for October 8th.
All those in favor? Superintendent 34.
You don't vote?
I think even though we vote on a computer, I think it's still important to verbally for the people on Channel 22 to at least see that, because they're not going to see what they're giving, you know, they're going to look at our minutes.
Good points. Generally, being what all of our boards are starting to realize that they want to do. I only want to mention a few of these items, but if you have questions on any of them, I'm happy to try to answer them. So we had our most recent educator evaluation training. We've had our last two sessions, I should tell you, at the Seabrook Public Library. They've been terrific in accommodating us, and that's been great. It's proven to be a great location for us as well. And so the next phase of this is in December and January. Administrators from across our schools and the SAU will get together in different locations with Mr. Rebus to do observations, so that they get a chance to talk about those, what they're observing, talk about what they're writing. I have always found this to be really the most important part of this training, and that's going to go on in January, or excuse me, December and January. School visits, I'm in the middle of, actually a little bit beyond, in the middle of doing school visits. I spent the day shadowing two of your graduates at Winnetconan High School today, in what was a great experience. And was at the middle school on Friday, and will be at the elementary school on the 22nd. I listed the policies that the policy subcommittee most recently dealt with, which will go on your agendas for December, but not so much about those policies right now. But just to comment on the great work that this particular group has done. We are nearly through all of the policies that are required by law. We are nearly through them and have updated them in every district. And we are actually getting to some of the policies that are not necessarily in that category. You'll see three having to deal with staff ethics and the evaluation of the superintendent, which go beyond that required by law list. So we're starting to get into some of those, which is great news. I will tell you, as superintendent, it's great to have policy manuals that actually conform to the law when I run into an issue with a parent or a staff member. Board members deserve a lot of credit for this, and the other person that deserves an awful lot of credit for this work is Rhonda Evans, who has really put together this work, corresponded with the School Boards Association, and kept us on task. I want to mention that we have some changes in our human resources department. Charlene Sears, who was our payroll specialist, has taken over as human resources manager and is already doing a terrific job. Mary Hugo, who formerly worked in the Bedford Public Schools, has come on as our payroll specialist. She has a lot of experience in payroll, in that role in Bedford, and is doing a great job already. And I want to make sure that we thank Paula Cushman, who after her years of service, 40, did I hear somewhere along the line? She's been here some number of years, has come back and consulted through our team, and has really done a great job. I very quickly learned why people liked working with Paula so much, because her expertise and enthusiasm are amazing. And we are in the middle of negotiating with CESA. We have sort of a soft deadline date of December the 1st. So hopefully, we're going to come to some resolution on a collective bargaining agreement to bring to you in December. Our next session is tomorrow night. And so hopefully, I think that's the last one we have scheduled for December 1st. So hopefully, we'll have a collective bargaining agreement to recommend. That's it for my other.
Any questions?
This one. So just to make sure I'm clear, on the policies?
Yes.
Once we get done with this group here, we'll be done with the by-law ones, right?
There are a few remaining, not very many. There are a few.
I just thought when we talked at the board, the joint board meeting, that we're going to wrap up the last of the law ones.
Yeah, I think we will at the next session, right. And then what it'll become is a little bit, it'll become a little bit dicier, right? Because there are some policies that are optional or recommended. So let's talk about recommended, that I think you'll all look at. Beyond that, we'll have to do some things board by board.
Okay, last question. For when we get changes that are set up like Concord, that changes the ones that we've already accomplished, how soon would those come back to visit us?
Next meeting, the next policy subcommittee. It's a great question, Mike. So what we're set up to do now, because goodness knows, the legislature makes changes quite often that NHSPA has to respond to. So we're in a position now that the minute we get recommended policy changes from NHSPA, we can actually bring them to the next policy committee meeting and have them on your books within two to three months.
That was a concern, because I've been watching the hospitals that are working around and out there on the website, and it's like, oh. So how does that change, how does that affect us? I mean, because we've had times where we're a little behind the curve, and now we're going through the process, and then we're moving into stuff that isn't by law. But if something gets changed in the state capitol, how does it get back to us?
Yeah, that's how. So NHSPA gives us a recommended policy generally within two to four months. We can have it on that agenda within a month or so, have it in your books within two to three months after that, which is much clearer. I mean, we had, you know, from a couple of policy subcommittee meetings, I know you were at, we had some that we just dealt with where the law was actually changing three years ago. And we were just getting to them now. So this architecture that we've set up of this committee really allows us to be much more responsive.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Assistant Superintendent report.
Okay, thank you. You have my written report in front of you. I'll just highlight a couple of things. First, I can kind of pull the first two headings together. So we've already preliminarily met with the curriculum teams in preparation for November 20th. And as we were talking about PowerSchool, looking at apples to apples across the board, that's the function of the curriculum teams this year. So we're going to be sitting down all third grade teachers, for example, in the entire SAU, fourth grade, fifth grade. So we're going to be sitting down in grade bands, horizontal grade bands, and looking at the competencies that are associated with our classes in an effort to build the architecture in PowerSchool kind of behind the grading and assessment policies. So that's the work that we have unfolding on the 20th. And you'll see we have a lot of different teams, and we have the facilitators. In addition to the facilitators that are going to be working those meetings, we have all of our SAU administrators in the mix as well. So it should be a pretty robust conversation, and we should get a lot done. Second thing is the math program review. I wanted to make sure that you guys had updates on that. We've started by just collecting a lot of data right now. Right now, we are looking at statewide assessment data, we're looking at NWA data. Furthermore, at the high school level, we're looking at that algebra transition, right? How students are faring when they go into Algebra I at the high school level, how students are faring when they choose the geometry honors option at the high school. And how does that play back in terms of the codified curriculum they've had, K through 8, the amount of direct instruction, the way the schedule's built in each one of our schools, how that has informed kind of the math progress? And at the end of the day, what we plan on doing is looking at our data, looking at best practice, and kind of doing a crosswalk, where we can find some needs and find some strengths. The only other thing that I wanted to highlight is, one of the things at the high school that we've grown concerned about is the retention in classes. So if we have our students funneling into these honors levels tracks, are they sticking with it, and are they being successful in that honors level tracks? Or are we seeing a gradual drop down over the course of time? That's another thing that we're going to be tracking. So right now, the document is very long, it's got a lot of data in it, and we're just kind of parsing through to find out what the importance of this is. Last thing, and this is old news to you, is the PowerSchool parent portal. It's opening throughout the SAU this month at different times. Each school's kind of doing it their own way, what you guys are on topic about. That's it.
Any questions?
Yes. So when we talk about the curriculum, and we'll go on apples to apples, but now it looks like you're going to do SAU-wide. Is that going to help that whether the kid comes from Hampton, Northampton, Seabrook, Southampton, while they go to Mass, or any of those schools when they go to Winnetconan, they're going to be all prepped the same way? Because, I mean, because right now, we do see some variations from our curriculums going when they go to Winnetconan or Winnetconan from a different grade or a different school that come to our, you know, they're in different levels. So if we're talking apples to apples going across, is that going to kind of smooth that out and get that curriculum so it's kind of all teaching the same thing?
So one of the happy side effects of this conversation is, at the end of the day, each teacher on the competency side of their gradebook is going to have an architecture, a roadmap, if you will, of competencies. And you can hit those competencies in whatever way you see fit, so you have autonomy in teaching, or whatever order you see fit. That's not the issue. The issue is, we all have the same targets. So to answer your question, yes. There's going to be a lot more consistency in terms of the expectations in the gradebook. And how that plays in the classroom, that's where the professional development comes in. But the fact that we all have the same targets is a big step forward.
Thank you. Executive Director of Student Services report.
So let me just say two words about Caroline's report. First, under special education, you know, we were asked a lot last year about this position and the need for this position and the importance of this position. And there are lots of sort of anecdotal stories that I can tell you about the work that Caroline's doing. But here's one that's very specific in terms of being able to look at transportation across our districts and try to figure out where there are some efficiencies that can be achieved. And I can tell you, because I've actually spoken to a couple of the parents at Northampton, and I think at Seabrook, and in some of our other districts, there's been some opportunity there to create more efficient transportation runs, particularly for students that are placed out of district or are special education and have placements in our schools. So that's a very definite area where she's devoted a lot of time. The other thing that's on here is, the reason she's not here tonight, is that that team, the Seacoast Care team that you heard a presentation about at the joint board meeting, they are at the National Nabida Conference, and that includes both Dr. Eric Killian and your middle school principal, Erin Milbury, who are there right now. And I have pictures on my phone from their training in Florida that I could show you from the work that they're doing there. So we're really happy that they're there. They're doing a lot of work, particularly around establishing the right kinds of documents and arrangements that have to be made between our districts, and particularly with SAU 90, and setting up the particular protocols so that they can get that group functioning in January. We had a question at the joint board meeting, right? One person said, one of the board members from another district said, do you see students in this SAU who would be referred to this program, this idea, now? I can tell you, over the last two weeks, even knowing that this group wasn't going to start taking student referrals till January, they've had referrals from schools saying, can't you start with these couple of students now and not wait till January? So clearly, there's a need for students who people think have the potential, right, of dealing with self-harm or potential harm to others and wanting to get them the right kinds of services. So we're happy to be starting them now.
Any questions? SCS Principal report.
Good evening, everyone. You have my report in front of you. But recognition to Mark Dangora, Angie Butzer, Robin Kazaza, Corey Easton, and Kelsey Conley, who did a lot of hard work lately with the growing social-emotional learning needs of our school, our students, and our school community. And that included opening our reset room. We kind of provided another level layer to supporting students. So with our responsive classroom, we have a take-a-break chair or area in the classroom. So if a student wants to initiate themselves, feels like they need a break, they can go there. Or a teacher might encourage them to go there, and they can kind of regroup, refocus, and get back to work. Or they're still in a situation where they're still feeling that they need some extra time, they would go to what we call our buddy classroom. So every teacher has, whether a teacher next door or across the hall, and they would go to their take-a-break space. And the teachers have been really good with that and helping process. You know, sometimes it might be 1:00 in the afternoon, and a student has been getting some support from their regular teacher, but might still be struggling. And to have another perspective and another teacher to process with them has been helpful. And then, so we've added this reset room as another option that's after that. And it's basically a space where any of the administrators or behavior supports, school counselors, school social worker, and we have a couple of teachers that are helping out during their free time, can take students to this other area and process with them, give them something to engage with. We have various different activities that they can do. And just some time to kind of get outside of their daily routine and focus and kind of recalibrate. And we do a lot of work, as we've talked about, with responsive classroom and the zones of regulation and knowing kind of how you're feeling and processing why. And then our goal is to get them back into the classroom. Sometimes there's things that end up going the behavior route, but this is basically another resource. So for instance, if I get a call from Lori Dubey that a student needs to go to the reset room, I might go to the classroom and take that student out, and it's not, they're in trouble or anything. It's very clear, like, hey, we're going here and we're taking a break. So it's added this other layer. So it's added this other layer where they're seeing that we're just constantly trying to support them and get them back on track. So it's been helpful. And we just kind of take different hours or half hour chunks and man that throughout the day. For events this month, we have already had our Veterans Day Assembly, which Mark, Kasey Small, and Katrina O'Brien and some others had helped organize. And it was another great event. Mark, I don't know if you want to say anything?
Oh, we were able to bring in six veterans that had seen some action in Afghanistan, Korea, and Vietnam. Just having the opportunity for our students to celebrate the, these six veterans who dedicated their lives for our freedoms was pretty amazing. Also want to thank Keith for being there. Keith was there in attendance as well. Thank you. A love of Caroline. It's a nice opportunity to have that conversation of why we have Monday off. It's just not a holiday. But it's kind of a, kind of a reflective time as well. We emphasize that notion with our students as well, that it's important to think about our veterans. And we had refreshments at about fifteen, twenty minutes before the assembly. So it was nice just to sit and talk with the six veterans along with four or five other students, fourth graders. We had poems read by third graders. We had songs, a song sung by fourth graders. And the whole school sang, "Oh, how I love America." And every single veteran in attendance had a tear in their eye. It was really, really moving to see that. And it's a nice opportunity for our kids to see what other people do for us. Very special time.
We also, for the past month, kids can do something about their hero. We have a sheet that they're filling out about somebody, a veteran, within their family or a neighbor. And we still have those throughout the month hanging up. So you can't see through my window. Or Lori Doobie, it's all plastered though, so feel free to stop by. It's really nice.
I should have my granddaughter have one up at the hose.
Yeah, that's nice. We currently have 6,000 people who serve in New Hampshire and over 400 are from Seabrook. So it's pretty amazing and pretty moving and very relevant to our day-to-day business.
The video was very informative. Some great pictures from the past and such. And a little script for background where there was a daughter or a son was in school, a grandparent, something. It was really neat.
Yeah, really.
Mr. Chase was in there, by the way.
Was he?
Yes.
In the video?
On the video?
Middle school. Middle school video, yeah.
I just want to apologize because I wanted to make it for both of them. My work schedule didn't work for that.
Oh, thanks for saying that.
It, it is impressive that I actually get an invite for both of them because I was actually invited to the elementary and to the middle school. I actually got back in town at 1:30 and then the sound was already over by then, so by the time I get back from work.
We try to coordinate with the middle school, have a morning one and afternoon one, so people have that option, that choice.
Well, next year, I'll try and take the day off and just attend both of them.
Appreciate it. Love to see you.
So this Thursday, we have our fourth grade music concert, so our first music concert of the year. As you know, we have a fourth grade one, then maybe third, second, and first. So fourth grade is this Thursday at six o'clock. If you are not able to go to that, we do have a rehearsal during the day on Thursday at 8:35. So pop into that if you'd like. And Dave already spoke to it, but we have our Professional Development Day on November twentieth. And basically, in terms of academic and program updates, we're continuing to focus on the social emotional learning needs and looking at how we can restructure things to add different supports, giving some consulting support into the school. Because it's just a growing need. And continuing to work on the zones of regulation. Professional developments, on November fourth, we had our consultant who works with John Vander Oes, Jill Dear, who came in and worked with our teachers, met with each teacher team to work on their quality performance assessments that they're doing for this year, just formalizing what they're going to do and talking through resources and what that would look like. And Lauren was, worked with each of those groups too. Lauren, yeah?
It was a very productive day as far as each team really lifted off their next QPA, reflected on the one that they did last year. But it was wonderful that I could be there at all the meetings because then I could take minutes and bring those to their PLC groups and really move forward in their groups during the, while we don't have Jill. So we did a little bit of that work today with kindergarten boards. So you kind of can take that work and bring it into their, into their team meetings and into their PLC groups with the consistent conversations that can keep those QPAs moving. And that's all the competency work that's going to lead to report card and to all the larger district work. So it, it does dovetail really nicely. Jill was fantastic. She was just fantastic. Facilitator, it's just a really productive day.
So we're just trying to kind of see all the pieces come together. Yep, we've done some curriculum work, some curriculum mapping. We've got the quality performance assessments and now we're getting to the reporting and grading. So it's nice to see that all be connected. So thank you to Dave and Lauren for helping with that work at different levels. Community connections, we had Staples donated some more supplies. They did right before school, but they have continued to have a bin out there and so they donated some more. And we're focusing using those in our Sea Stars After School Program, which has been great. And I have mentioned here, the O'Briens, general store owner, had graciously donated some funds to offset some of the balances that people have accrued in our lunch and breakfast program. But I know we have an acceptance for that later in the agenda. That's all. Any questions?
So some recognitions, we had our youth to youth. And Mrs. Dow, Mrs. Flaherty, and Ms. Parsons organized our Red Ribbon Week. It was a great success with school spirit, some public announcements each day, and other messages of choosing to be drug-free throughout the week. We have that every year and Mrs. Flaherty sort of heads that up and gathers the staff who can assist with her. We had a wonderful Veterans Day ceremony, as you saw. Some of you were able to attend. Thank you so much. Lots of neat pictures, like you said, Mr. Ravidu about some Greek grandfathers in there and the kids were just glued. It was really interesting to see their eyes just honed in on the pictures. So I think they really, it meant something very deeply to them and it was nice to see them really take a lot out of it. We had the MCJ ROTC from Winnetka, and I recognize some former graduates in there, so that was neat. We have parent conferences. We're very well attended and an opportunity for a lot of teachers and conversations to be had with families. We had a neat trip, I think we touched on it last month, with our eighth graders attending the College and Career Fair at SST. Mrs. Flaherty, thank you again for that opportunity. We continue to work on our emergency planning, beginning with the elementary school. We just recently had a lockdown drill, went very well. And in addition, we just recently had a fire drill, so continuing to practice our drills. And we had the police department on hand for our lockdown this year. So that was a first for that and just continuing to discuss and fine-tune those scenarios. The PTO had a generous donation from Mrs. Harder in the Makerspace, which is our former computer lab, calling it now the Makerspace area. I like to call it the Innovation Lab. And there's a hygiene project out of Hampton, but they create their financial support systems through Sea Coast Youth Services and they donated a lot of deodorants and facial wipes and things like that to help our middle schoolers in need of either physical education or in the health class. Followed by our upcoming important dates and enrollment. Thank you.
Any questions? Director of Special Services.
I reported on two of the trainings that some of our real service providers attended. Some very critical information and strategies that they learned in dealing with our students who have challenges in these areas. Ashley Torres joined our school last month. Will be here on a full-time basis as school psychologist. And she's been very busy already with intervention team meetings, special ed team meetings, middle school team intervention, and has already begun evaluating students in visiting classrooms.
Any questions for Anna?
School psychologist? Is this the position that we had, it's up there? Or is this just the, is this the contract for a person to cover while we are working?
It's another form of a contract, isn't that right? Yeah, we've not been able to secure a employee.
It said full time, so I was like, oh, can we actually find somebody to fill that slot?
We have not.
There's no numbers in your report this month you typically have?
Right, we, so Caroline and Anna are discussing how to do that, particularly when we have small numbers that could be, could lead to identifiable information. So we're trying to figure out exactly how we do that without running into these situations where there are ones and twos, which can be extremely identifiable. So we're working on that.
Okay. All right, Facilities Report.
Thank you very much. I'm always amazed at how quickly these months come by and the time goes by. And again, I like to say just before I start, you know, as we go through, I remember it seemed like yesterday was my first year and of course, it's not my first year. And I'm just appreciative, I think it needs to be said once in a while, of the people I get to work with, you know, administration and the people in this building, I just can't say enough. I know sometimes everybody's busy. Sometimes me and Mark have meetings as we walk down the hallway together, what we need to, to discuss and, and talk about sometimes because, you know, we'll pass each other and I'll turn around or he'll turn around and walk the same way for a few feet. So I just appreciate of, of just the opportunity to work here and work with such great administration and students. It's actually something that I feel very blessed at. And that said, we had a few inspections this month. A deputy fire chief inspection, a health inspector came in and they just finished that up. I haven't received a report from them yet, but they come out every year. I have the deputy fire chief that's required to do that every year, but I also have the health inspector come out every year, even though it's not required because I think another set of eyes when we walk around is really wise. And especially that we have a new one now. It was great to get a new perspective and a new focus. So it's, it's awesome to work with also the people that we have in our community that are here to help us. Now, we had our playground inspection. I, I want to quote what she said because I'm kind of excited about it. She says, "No recommendation generated by this audit." So we've made that point. It's been a long time coming. But she said that we've reached every recommendation that she's had in the past audits and that she, when she did this check this time, she had no recommendations. So I, I just want to, you know, give credit to, credit to do. We have a great staff. We have a great staff that, that work in making sure that that happens and that that playground is safe. And they're on top of that. Also, we had a, a couple of other things. I want to say it was savings. I like to share the savings that we have. We look at the windows, we reassessed some of the window locks and going over and beefing those up. And we were able to actually do that in-house. And there was $1,100 savings. We sat down, me and the maintenance department, and kind of looked it over and says, "Dude, can we handle this? Should we, you know, send this out for bid and then have a contractor do this or can we handle this?" And we decided that we would get the material for that. And we looked at the price that he gave and we were able to do that in-house, so that's definitely a savings. One other noted thing I like to talk about on the maintenance report, that thankful for the donation that we got, the basketball hoop has been installed. And it was quite the feat, seeing that we had so much rain, to get that up in, in the middle. So anytime it stopped raining, we'd all run out there and do a little bit and we'd go, it would start raining, we'd come back. So it took three or four different movements to get out there, to get it done between the rain and running in between that. But we were able to do that and we see the kids out there, they're, you know, they love the fact that they actually have two basketball hoops now. And anything to do with sports are out there having a great time. And I'm just thankful that I have a maintenance crew that, you know, will get these tasks done. You know, I sell a lot of stuff out in front of these guys and they work hard to, to make sure that they, they get that process done that I asked them to do. Any questions? Thank you.
So the window locks?
Yes.
These were the ones that we had, we had stuck in the back and now it's because the windows locks were broken over here?
There were some that, that were broken. There's some needed some attention. We did, and we, and we went through every fifty window and made sure that we put a beef, a heavier lock on it. If the lock worked, we replaced it and put a heavier lock on them and went through every one of the windows. See, I think we have two right now that we still have to replace, but they're, you know, they have the, the other work, the lock that works properly.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
I don't know if it's for you or for... Have we heard about the Homeland Security audit? Have we heard that paperwork back yet?
We did receive it back. The administrators may want to touch on that, but we did receive that back, yes.
So we received that, but we haven't had our next safety meeting.
All right, Finance Report.
So Matt's, we've given him November meetings off because of the number of budget meetings he has. I want to mention one thing from the revenue report in particular. And that is that you will see that because of the ongoing, still ongoing issue regarding Medicaid, we have scaled back our projections of Medicaid revenue to 25% of our original projection. We do not believe that we're... So first of all, I should tell you that Dr. Killian is working on some strategies that will allow us to work closer with parents to make sure we can access Medicaid funds. However, at the time that Mr. Farrar had to make some judgment on this, it was looking like we're certainly not going to collect what we originally anticipated. All that while the state was telling us that they believe they've put rules in place that allow us to collect more than what we've collected in the past. We don't see how that's going to happen. And, and we are continuing to try to work with the Department of Education to see if the rules are going to be, rules are going to be put in place that will allow us to reach our original revenue projections. But it looks like at this point, that's not going to happen. So that's the one item I wanted to point out to you.
Any questions?
Yeah. On the kindergarten aid, it's at 100% right now?
Yes, so I think what's going on there, as I remember from, from the discussions I've been in on, is because of the way the state budget went through, I believe what they've done is rolled kindergarten aid into, let me find that, into the education aid. And so I think that's what you're seeing there, that it's been zeroed out. Right, and it's been zeroed out because you'll see the increased number in the 3110 account, the first account there, because I think they've lumped full day kindergarten aid into the general education aid. And so overall, you see an increase when you combine those two accounts, you see an increase overall. But it's, it's a matter of how the state's now accounting for kindergarten aid.
The other one was the director of management.
I'm sorry?
Salary for the director and manager.
On the expenditure report?
Yes, $45,000.
I'm sorry, which, which director?
110, I'm unidentified.
Yep, and unidentified, it's 102.
Two.
522-10091. 102. We're at 212.9%.
What page is it?
Page five, page five. $45,000.
We're at 212%, 213%.
So I'm, I'm, I don't know that one. I'll check with Matt and get you a written answer.
I thought that was, I thought that was due to, from our last meeting was due to the increase of our curriculum coordination.
It is, so there was an increase in where we ended up salary-wise as opposed to budget, but it wasn't $45,000. So I want to, I want to explain the number. There was some increase there. So I want to, I want to explain the number. There was some increase there over what we had originally budgeted, but it's not forty-five thousand, so I'll get you an answer.
Any other questions? School nutrition report.
So first off, I just wanted to thank you all for letting me talk tonight on behalf of the nutrition department. Some updates on this year, we were awarded the Fresh Fruit and Vegetable Grant for this academic year. And for those who are unfamiliar with this grant, it's an opportunity for us to provide fresh fruit and vegetables to all the students in the Superbuck School District. Free of charge, it's just an additional snack. The point is to expose the kids to various fruits and vegetables that they may not see within their normal eating habits. So for example, ugly fruit, star fruit, asparagus. We're trying to expand our range with that. This year, we are also expanding that to the middle school students as well. We're still trying to work out the details of serving time for them, but we were awarded the money to be able to offer it to our middle school students as well, which is great because before we have just done the elementary school students. We are also doing the snack and supper program again this year. So that allows us to provide a third meal to students every single day. If they're a part of the C-Stars or SAS after-school programs, we provide a separate meal and then we also provide them a snack. The enrollment for SAS, I don't have the numbers, but from the nutrition standpoint, last year and the year before, we were serving about fifty kids a day, snack and supper. C-Stars has been around forty-five kids. This year, we have upped it for SAS, it's about sixty to sixty-five kids a day. In C-Stars, it's about forty-five, which is great. Still that means we're increasing our counts by ten to fifteen kids. It's a whole nother meal for them, free of charge. They don't have to worry about it, which is great. Additionally, our nutrition department is currently short-staffed by two employees. We are actively seeking for new applicants to be considered for these positions. With that being said, my staff, they are rock stars in the kitchen. They work very hard every single day. You would not know that they are short-staffed. They're always working hard. I'm always willing to lend a hand in the dish room. You can always see me in the different windows. I like to do dishes now over serving. I've gotten very good at spraying the trays. It took me a while, but now I can actually do it really quick. But I really need to say thank you to my staff because without them, the students would not be able to eat. I also want to thank the administration and the staff, the teachers and the assistants. They are very willing to come in and help the younger kids serve from the salad bar because that can be kind of hard for them. So they take their time monitoring the kids and really help serve them to make our line go quicker so the kids have more time to eat. So I wanted to say thank you for that. Some current events we're doing in the cafeteria this year, we're doing a tasteful Tuesday. So every other Tuesday in the month, we are doing a flavor-packed dish to offer to the students. The goal is to just introduce and expand the students' palates. We have, for example, done like maple mustard chicken, beef and cheddar casserole, chicken parmigiana. This tends to go a lot better with the middle school students than it does with the elementary school students. So what we have started to do is offer that flavor-packed dish and then a more neutral dish for the kids to actually pick and choose from. So if they want to try the chicken parm, they can, or they can just have chicken, pasta and sauce and the chicken on the side, just to be able to please as many palates as possible. This coming Friday, we do have our big Thanksgiving meal. I did include the menu for you. If anyone is free, you guys are more than welcome to come. My staff works really hard. They already started cooking the turkeys today, preparing the stuffing today, preparing the dessert today. They work all week for it. So if anyone is hungry on Friday who'd like to stop by, you can stop by any point past ten in the morning. We'll be serving all day, so feel free. Lastly, we have had a lot of generous donations made to the school nutrition department from individuals and various organizations. And I just wanted to take the time to say thank you to all those community members and organizations who have donated the money. When I am able to call the parents and say that they have been awarded a donation to help with their negative balance, the appreciation that is portrayed over the phone, it makes my entire day. Like I leave my office smiling because they're just so thankful. So even a twenty-five dollar donation, it really goes a long way, especially this time of year because it's the holiday season. So money can be really tight. So I just wanted to thank all those individuals and organizations for everything that they have donated to our program. And lastly, with student accounts, just because we talked about it earlier with the parents having access, something I actually started today was informing parents of their account balance, whether it was positive or negative, just so parents are able to know before it gets into the point of negative, that, oh, you only have ten dollars in your account, maybe just be mindful that it's going to be negative. I got a lot of positive feedback today from parents, being appreciative that they were told before it got negative so they can kind of be proactive. Like I said, we did just start it today because now we have access to all parents' emails within our lunchtime system. So my goal is to start that weekly and then maybe even do it bi-weekly depending on how it goes. So we sent out positive amount of emails today and like I said, there was a lot of positive feedback with that.
Does anyone have any questions for me? I do not.
Thank you.
Thank you.
May I go back to Mr. Sam Ward's question?
Absolutely.
Because the answer was pointed out to me by the elementary principal. It's actually, actually what's going on there is in that line in ten, unidentified, you see that it is a negative forty-five thousand dollar balance. However, down in twenty, which is the split between the elementary and the middle, it's a plus forty thousand dollar balance. So the, it was off by about the five thousand, four or five thousand dollars, which is, which is what we had to do salary-wise compared to budget, but it's just that it hasn't been credited appropriately to the middle versus elementary. Thank you.
I want to connect.
Thank you.
The school board, board here. Are there any questions on that? Do you have anything to go over?
For what? I do not, not this month. Thank you.
Do we have anything for other?
I do not.
We have the two thousand twenty calendar here, two thousand twenty-one.
So this is the same calendar that was presented at the joint board, which again strives to have our districts as much as possible start on the same days, end on the same days, have common professional learning times so that we can have teachers work together across the buildings, which I think our curriculum people and principals would speak to. It is a later start because Labor Day is late. We still start the week before, but we are pushed back slightly. And we have a number of elections that we have to work around because in some of our school buildings, we have voting and can't have school on those days. So we've tried as best we can to work around those days. So this is the recommended calendar for your consideration.
Do you need a follow-up on the calendar?
Yes, please.
I make a motion to accept the school calendar for two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one as written. A second.
All those in favor? There was no motion.
Oh, there wasn't? How about that? It should have had one, sorry.
That's fine. I just now have to remember how to do it, which I do not see. So let me just write it in the comment and I'll fill in later.
Great, thank you.
And a second, just a...
Second.
Yes.
And then everyone up there?
Yes.
Okay, thank you guys.
Thank you.
So acceptance of donations.
Is somebody speaking?
I guess.
Yes, please.
All right, so will the PTO do middle school?
Yes. I think I mentioned it, but specifically to refer to it again here, that would be for the Makerspace and for any other library items that Mrs. Harder for the sixth grade, she's the media specialist, will be needing. But she is, if you have a chance to swing into the Makerspace area, she's, she has a whole shelf of new items that she's creating, some pens that write and robotic little guys and it's just all technology-driven. So she's really building up that space. And I know she has every Thursday's Technology Thursday, so the students go into the Makerspace on Thursdays, so.
I make a motion to accept the donation, one thousand dollars, video.
A second.
All those in favor?
So the second donation is, impacts both schools. It's by the owner of O'Briens General Store and up at the one oh-seven. And basically, the owner had approached us to see if she could do something possibly ongoing to help offset balances within that current or the previous month. So she made a generous donation of three thousand dollars to start this. And if you need a place to buy a cup of coffee, feel free to stop by there because she's trying to do something where it's maybe fifty cents from every coffee would go towards our school. So she was very kind saying, well, I'm not sure exactly how much. I said, we can just kind of look at it each month and however much you've collected, we can go from there. So we're really appreciative of her. Very dedicated. She came with her daughter and Aunt Abby and Aaron and I and just talked about that she just feels like she needs to give back.
I make a motion to accept the O'Briens contribution. Much progress.
All those in favor?
Okay.
We have meeting dates coming up. School Board Budget Review will be November nineteenth at five-thirty.
I will not be there.
School Board Regular Meeting, December tenth at four-thirty. Any public comments? And do we need to go into?
We do. We have need of a non-public for day.
I make a motion to a non-public conference, our C.A.
A second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. So looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept Robin Katsas's retirement with regret. I wish the best in her endeavors.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And I'll make a motion to accept Mr. Schenckheimer's retirement with regret. So this is one of also the type of motion.
I'll check that.
I'm looking for a second. Thank you. Can you follow us in favor?
No. It's no with regret.
Looking for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.